Legislative office building in Albany each spring, providing an exciting opportunity for students and their families to connect with their legislators. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the Legislative Student Art Exhibit was shown virtually this year. Jasmine is a phenomenal artist specializing in figure drawing and illustrative portraits. Her selected work portrays a woman revealing that underneath her clothes is a skeleton. Jasmine is a master of proportion and has an advanced understanding of lighting. Jasmine will be continuing her artistic education when she attends FIT in the fall. Mark is an innovative and creative artist. His selected work features a stormy scene with a lake leveathon, a mystical sea serpent diving in and out of the waves. So I'm learning new vocabulary through the arts this year in the right. Leveathon, is that how you say it? Leviathan, thank you. Mark created the artwork using a variety of advanced watercolor techniques. Mark is interested in pursuing science and engineering in college. Specifically, he wants to develop prosthetics. We are so impressed by both Mark and Jasmine's talents and congratulate both students as well as their teacher, Ms. Lambert, on this amazing achievement. Congratulations. So I want to invite up the high school string quintet along with their teacher, Ms. Verderosa. So can you guys come on up? Our high school string quartet is made up of seniors Amanda, Kintanea, Wilansky, Colu, and Spencer Mace, and juniors Gavin Aquino and Ashley Campos. Their teacher is Mrs. Verderosa. Our string quintet is composed of these amazing musicians up here in front of us tonight. This ensemble was selected by audition to participate in the Long Island Strings Festival Association Chamber Festival on March 20th, 2022. At the festival, the students participated in master classes and coaching sessions with members of the Bryant Park Chamber Players. The event concluded with a live concert at the Steller Center for the Arts at Stony Brook University, where the students performed their third movement of Mozart's Quintet. We applaud their hard work and dedication of the North Babylon School Quintet members and their wonderful teacher, Ms. Verderosa, who has had an ensemble selected for this festival every year since moving to the high school orchestra position. Congratulations. Now I want to move on to acknowledging the staff member. Is Ms. Olson here? Please come on down, thank you. And can Ms. Jackson please come on down with her? And Mr. Rose, I would have you come down, but I know you're videoing, so if you... And Mr. Stewart, come on down. So the reason we have Ms. Olson here tonight is because she has won the Model Schools Grant Award for Technology Innovation. The lesson that was submitted called "Blue Bot's Big Problem." The lesson uses technology to inspire students' imagination and encourage them to design and create in order to solve a problem. Students in grades two through five completed this lesson in our brand-new library's Maker Space setting. For those students or for those people who are unfamiliar with Maker Spaces, they're a place where students sometimes learn alongside teachers, parents, and mentors, where they can create, problem-solve, and develop skills and talents and thinking skills, and increase their mental rigor. This award is quite an honor, but it only skims the surface on the engaging, innovative projects Ms. Olson has been working on with her students. She is constantly thinking of new ways to get her students collaborating, thinking outside the box, and designing to solve real-world problems. The Maker Space at Belmont is up and running and giving students opportunities to persevere through design failures, which require them to rethink, improve, try again, and then meet with success, all while having lots of fun and laughs along the way. This work truly embodies the 21st century skills we want our students to have here in North Babylon. We are proud to have Ms. Olson as one of our librarians. Thank you. Congratulations. I would now like to invite up Mrs. Drantz and Dr. Kim, please. Can you come up? On October 2nd, 2021, at its annual membership meeting, the New York State Theater Education Association awarded the Rob Marriott Award to Mrs. Drantz. Presented annually, the Rob Marriott Award is presented for lifetime achievement in educational theater. This is New York State's Theater Education Association's highest award and is named in memory of a founding member of the organization. As you may or may not know, Mrs. Drantz is currently a teacher of theater at North Babylon High School, where she teaches a high-school-level sequential theater program in performance and production in partnership with Suffolk Community College's Beacon Program. As a member of the New York State Theater Education Association, Mrs. Drantz sponsors students who attend the annual student conference, is an active presenter at the conference, has presented workshops at the educators' conference, and currently serves as a co-chair for the Long Island Region for the organization. Mrs. Drantz has served on the Theater Committee of Long Island Scholar-Artists Awards, has been an active contributor to several New York State Education Department Committees for Theater Education, and is a frequent presenter at the Long Island Balanced Minds Conference. Mrs. Drantz is an invaluable resource for our students who study theater and is with great pride that we acknowledge her here tonight. Thank you. Congratulations. So I just wanted to share with the board and the community the changes that we have been going through this year to improve and update our website.
Okay. So here's our current main page of the website. And what I want to draw your attention to is we have been working very hard to make this more user-friendly for our community and our parents. And one of the things I want to draw your attention to first is the buttons that are along here on the bottom. So each of these buttons now have an easily accessible way that when you click "department," you'll then see each department within the district that you then can click on the department to... Here's Social Studies, some information on Social Studies. And each department, I'll give you an example here. This is very touchy, hold on. So an example here in the business office. So any documents you wanted from the business office are readily available here. And you'll see after we complete this year's budget, there'll be budget documents for the '22-'23 school year will be here. Right now, they currently lie in our district, which is on every page. And when you go to the Board of Education, I remodeled the Board of Education page since we last looked at it. And I put all of our plans and policies in this area here, our current meeting minutes, and our agendas here by year. And then down at the bottom is an introduction to each of the board members and the website, the web address to get in touch with the district clerk. In here, when you go to Agenda, Meetings, and Presentations, if you go to this current school year, in here you'll see all the backups of all of our presentations and agenda backups that are listed here for the board. So in doing this, we have been trying to make the website more accessible through the main page, and our intention is to get all of our pages up to this type of change so that they're more accessible. So any information you want on COVID-19, you would press here. Our updates would be in here. All of our plans are listed here. In Returning to School forums, our community letters from COVID are in here. So this is our COVID dashboard that we've been keeping. So all of these, if you go to About Our District, you'll see buttons in here. So there's our mission, vision, and core beliefs is here. Organizational structure, where if you're interested in knowing the positions and who people report to, you'd be able to see our organizational structure. I completed a webpage myself here, and each of the cabinet will be completing their own webpage. So here's a webpage that I created for the school district that people can go to and how to contact me. So we've been going through the main page because when we transitioned over to the new site, there's a lot of vetting of data and information that needs to be done to get it to a functional spot. If you look, even under Faculty Resources, we've changed the faculty links. So here, if a staff member needs to go to any of these sites, they're linked right here along with their icon. Okay? And we've done the same thing under Parent Resources, where if you go to our Parent Resources page, we list all the information for each PTA, for each school. And on the bottom here, we have all the connections for the parent portal or any software that parents may need to navigate to. So as we continue to work on our main page, we're going to take these resources and start working on the other areas in our school. When you go to Plans and Policies under About, every plan and policy that the district is required to post is listed there. So you see our Emergency Management Plan, the Water Sampling, Megan's Law. We have this new here at North Babylon addressing vaping. So we've had some issues with vaping. I sent out a message to all the high school parents the other day. It draws them to this website with resources for vaping and some of the things that we're doing in our high school to help students not vape in school, as it's been causing an issue with fire alarms and such in the high school. So I just wanted to share that with the Board of Ed so that you could see the changes to our main page and the types of changes that will be occurring as we move along. If you look here, we added our Bulldog Salon here, which is a great page for... This is our cosmetology studio. And then we talk about all the services that we offer there on our Saturdays. And if you come up here and it says "Meet the Dream Team," you can see each of the students who are in the cosmetology program, and they wrote a little bio about themselves. If they wanted a picture, they were able to put one in there. If they didn't, they didn't have to. And speaks about the people, the kids who are working in our cosmetology program. And it also lists all the services that we offer. So if you go here and you go under Nail Treatments, you'll see that a manicure is $8 and a gel powder dip manicure is $10. I really don't know the difference about that. And artificial nails are $15. So it really... And then there's a Contact Us button over here. So if you want, you can request a service through this form right through the website. And here it tells you, the salon's on Fridays from 7:30 to 9:30, and Saturday from 9:00 to 2:00. And we have an email address to email the salon as well as a phone number. So there's some great resources here, and we're really trying to update the website and doing some work on the main page first, and then building out to the school pages in the same way. All right? So that's why I just really wanted to share that information with the board. Yeah, so it's there. So if you go to here, right, on the main page, and you go at the top where it says YouTube, and you click that link, this is the YouTube link, and it's right... Here's today's meeting right now. Okay? So here we are right now, live streaming in there. So it's linked right at the top of the page. At the top of the page for our website, we have our YouTube. We have a direct link to our Facebook page, and we have a direct link to our Twitter page as well, on the top of every page of the district. Okay?
Thank you, Glenn. That was a very good look into the website. I hope everyone enjoys it and you guys get a chance to tour around and look at different things that are available and a lot of information. Excuse me if you catch me squinting, but I left my glasses on down on the table on the way home before going in, so I'll do my best to get through this. Public participation, I don't know if I'll give it a try. This section is a Board of Education opportunity to recognize residents who wish to raise a question or make a brief statement. On agenda items, so we have five minutes. Anyone have any questions? Okay, so up to Policy. Recommend the Board approve the following policies for the first reading. Release of statements by District Media NP 3172, and then also a social media policy, NP 6155. Need a motion? Second?
Second.
Second Heather, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. And then we have no second meeting at this time. We got Personnel Actions, Preservations, Terminations, and Losses of Absence, Appointment, Tenure, and Salary Changes. Need a motion? Motion Dan, second. Second. Keisha, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We got omnibus letters A through H. Questions? Need a motion?
Motion.
Bob?
Yep.
Motion Bob, second. Second Dan, all in favor? Aye, motion carries. Internal Audit, three quarter? I don't have to read that one. Motion? Second Bob, all in favor? Motion carries. We got Election Inspectors for the May 17 budget vote. Need a motion? Motion Dan, second. Second Heather, all in favor? Motion carries. Acceptance of Candidate Nomination. Resolved, the Board of Education hereby accepts the vote petition received by the district clerk until April 18th. And hereby directs the district clerk to include these candidates on the ballot for May 17, 2022, Annual District Meeting and Election. Reason why I read that is because you can tell the date is for the 18th. We are passing that now. And just so everyone knows, as long as those candidate nominations come in, with all the right accruals and everything okay by the district clerk, we are giving acceptance now because of the holiday. They have it to April 18th. Keep in mind, the offices will be closed on Friday, but it will be open special. The hours? 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM at Central Office. And we're going to reach out to the RON to turn that in. All right, so I need a motion? Motion Bob, second. Second Teresa, all in favor? Motion carries. Okay, we got a Superintendent Hearings Appeal, which we spoke about in Executive Session. This is going to be a roll call vote. So I need a motion first, before we get out. Just a moment. So, whereas the Board of Education reviews a record of disciplinary procedure pursuant to education law concerning a student A. Now therefore to be resolved, the Board of Education hereby denies the appeal of the parent of student A in its entirety confirms the decision of the Superintendent of Schools and further directs the district clerk notifies the parents and the students about termination. So I need a motion first? Motion Teresa, second. Second Dan, it's a roll call vote.
This is Calvin Corbette?
Yes.
This is mine, this is mine?
Yes.
This is Trevor?
Yes.
This is Roland?
Yes.
This is Corbette?
Yes.
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 Good. So that's that. Now we have adoption of the 2022-2023 budget. So we're going to go with a motion on that? Motion Dan, second? Second. And before we move forward, I just want to give the Board an opportunity to have any discussions based on the budget.
I also want to give you the state number change. And I have a small handout here that Frank created for you guys to kind of look at if you want him to review this with you, change its state and what that did regarding...
So Frank, since we can't put it up, can you just talk to it?
Yeah, so the most important part is we got more money for the state. So all along we've been doing, using the executive budget proposal this year, when the legislative budget came out, a little bit later, so we came out of the loop. The net number for us, that's important in the general fund, so it's $492,000. So that's additional money we're going to get. We also receive additional money for APK. That's going to be especially much, so that's $337,000. So that's more. Yeah, so the total that we're going to get in APK is $829,548. So when you're looking at the handouts, the bottom slide, you see that's the chart that I showed pretty much every presentation. Everything remained the same, the total budget remains the same. What we did was just like last year, propose that extra money that came in from the legislative budget. We're able to use less of the restricted reserves. So what you would see if you compared this to the prior presentations is appropriated from restricted reserves. That number is going to go down by $492,000, and the state is up by $492,000. So it's a direct swap of getting more money from the state. So we have, so we use less of our status. The total budget amount is staying the same. And the slide you see on the second page connecting the state budget versus state analysis, that reconciles the two different proposals and shows you those numbers.
So if you look at the page that says "Estimated Revenue and Use of Financial Resources," you'll notice on the line that says "Appropriated from Restricted Reserves." And if you go under the proposed, it says $1,382,596. And then it says minus 18.49%. We reduced our appropriated reserve money in this budget based on the general fund stating that we got additional. So as you remember, our last meeting, we spoke about we are expecting to use the appropriated in this year's budget, so we wouldn't have it to put back into savings. And you would get in a very bad loop of spending $1.6 or $1.7 million a year from savings, where you could then deplete your reserves quickly. So we felt the money, putting it back into the reserve and reducing the amount of reserve we're using in this budget was the best use of that current new revenue that we received. Anyone have any questions?
Nice question, Glenn. Okay. So in reviewing the proposed budget, I did notice that there was a change in the class size that we've used for like planning and running classes in grades one through five. It was changed for this year and I see for next year. When I ran for the Board nine years ago, one of the reasons that I ran was the very high class sizes in elementary school. And, you know, along with the Board and CO, I'm proud that we were able to bring those numbers down. And the magic number that we used in creating sections and classes was 26 for, I think, at least five years. I didn't realize, but for this year, it was, the magic number was 27. And there were several sections that I'm assuming were eliminated this year. I'm not sure why it was brought up to 27 because we are losing sections in elementary school, which in turn will raise the class sizes. You know, in a time like this, I think we need to give our students more support. And I'm hoping maybe to just get an explanation and have a conversation. You know, we're hopefully coming out of the pandemic and our students really need to be supported. And again, we were the number 26 for many years. And I think it's important that we give our students at least what we had pre-pandemic.
So the 27 number came out of a Board meeting of May of 2021, where we had a conversation about what our current numbers were based on the hybrid model and moving into the new school year. We were returning everyone back in March. The elementary still had a full virtual program. We were making estimations, and we had a conversation about with students who rolled over and the class sizes that we were looking at 27 in a class. At that point, there would have been six excess teachers. Remember when we first did our initial staffing? By the time we were done preparing for the school year, each of those six teachers were recalled back and had a position within the district, whether it was a UPK or a different elementary position. So when one to five changed to 27, we kept that the same in building next year's as we built this year's. Right now, out of the total 78 sections, I'm going to, yeah, 78 sections, we have six that are at 27 at this point. And we did build again at the 27 with, there being currently six sections in our elementary school at 27. None of them at fifth grade, but there are some sections at third grade and then some sections at first grade as well in different buildings. So there are six total sections, elementary grades one through five in the district at 27.
Right, so starting this school year, moving from that 27, we lost four sections from one through five. And again, just where we are coming out, hopefully coming out of this pandemic, I would just like to have a discussion about going back to that magic 26 that we had pre-pandemic. Because when I was looking at it, I said, well, okay, there's two sections in first grade going into second that both would have an extra section. Pre-pandemic, we would have three sections, not two, like we're starting the year. Same thing, like you said, include the third going into fourth. You know, there's 27 in each of those classes. Pre-pandemic, we would have created another section and had three. MGV, fourth going into fifth, same thing, 53, it's 27, 26. It would have met that cap to create an additional section. And I guess my point is that we want to give our students the most support that they can get, and I'm just looking to have a conversation to bringing it back to where it was before the 1920 in March of...
The May 21 for this school year. It changed, this was the first year it was changed, correct?
Right, yes.
How many more sections would it be? I'm calculating six additional teachers. Because I'm trying to look at the chart here now. I see a 27 at Parliament in first grade, two 27s in first grade, so that's three at Woods. So that's a three total. And then I see a two 27s in third grade, so that's five. And then I see one at fourth grade, so that's six. So it would be six total sections that are at 27. That if you broke it down, it would be six additional sections. My other question is how close are they to? Like if it gets worse, they have a section when they're in season? No, so the way, so let's just grab one of the examples that I have here. So in first grade right now... So in first grade right now, where Woods is at two sections of twenty-seven. If a new student comes in that would be enrolled in Woods, the, the class sizes at Belmont are twenty-three, twenty-one, and twenty-two. And the class sizes at M G V are twenty-two and twenty-one. So we would roll those students over into those classes, which tell, you know, it says, you know, we have, um, space in those. We have about, um, twenty-six, twenty-seven, thirty-four open first grade spaces across the district. So we could get thirty-four more first graders. That would bring us to twenty-seven in every classroom, but there's thirty-four spaces at the twenty-seven cap. So on the last spot is where we look at how many seats are open across the district. So for example, like in Woods second, I mean, in second grade, we don't have any, anyone at twenty-seven in that grade in the district, but we have seventy-six vacant spots over there.
You know, again, like Heather said, go back to where we were, right? You know, that's, that was one of the problems and the issues that we felt. So now we have two sections, I think you said Woods, twenty-seven, twenty-seven, and they're counterparts in the district. You know, have a class in twenty-three.
And twenty-two were twenty-one.
Yeah, so, so again, that's where we tried to be equitable amongst, you know, that, that was our goal way back then. And now, you know, again, seeing that we did bring on U P K, which is an amazing program, but we, we had to fill six spots there. Because like you said, we had from U P K to fifth now. Um, and again, I don't wanna say that we still needed to fill over there, but it sort of seems like, you know, we're pushing them over in some classes, but not in others. So as we talk about district-wide, you know, everyone being equal, it's, it's just, you know, again, I, I would feel.
I feel tough with kids that have twenty-seven and five. I totally understand that. You know, um, if we take that third grade example, and Duluga has two twenty-sevens. If you break that, it's three eighteen's. So then you have another building that's twenty-five, twenty-four, twenty-four. So now you're comparing eighteen to twenty-five, or you're comparing twenty-five to twenty-seven. So in equity-wise, you're really closer in equitable services. With the larger classes, if you break this and you don't get additional students, you're running three classes at eighteen. And then other classes being run at twenty, like there are two sections at M G V in third grade are two twenty-sixes.
What did we do with this, um, again, we, we have some students in the same situation, right? So is there students currently now in the building?
There are some, yes, there are rollovers. I think, or you told me there's eighteen total students, but maybe more than that, but divided amongst the grades. I'd have to go through them one by one.
What would be the concerns? So a kid couldn't go back to Woods, but a kid could go back, I would say.
Correct, like they would be able to go back to where there was an open space. If you.
Can, can a parent have a twenty-seven class? Recommend their child went to a school that has twenty-one class?
No.
Glenn, is it possible to go back and get creative? And I, I feel like we're just taking a step backward if we jumped to twenty-seven when we were twenty-six, pre-pandemic. And, and the needs are just that much greater for students. We're looking something, I'm not sure why, but, um, you know, we're looking to add in, in all areas.
The only thing I could, at this point, of course, we could go back and, um, of course, you know, really hyper look at, um, the numbers. The one thing that's a positive is that with the additional U P K money, the one class that we were going to need to spend totally in the general fund can now come out of the U P K grant. And we budgeted him, correct me, a hundred and twenty thousand in the general fund for that U P K grant. So there is a hundred and twenty thousand in the budget, which would be a teacher that we can slide to the U P K grant, that additional three hundred thirty-seven thousand. So that would make another, a teacher available that we could, within this current budget structure, an additional teacher.
That's depending on that the state is, it's the same per student rate as they did last year. We can give, give that information again, how much personally we could.
Right now, we're allowed to spend seven thousand forty-nine dollars a student. They could, they could, they could say you're not allowed to spend nine thousand, which would be great, so.
And, and. You know, we felt comfortable with the amount of reserves we were using, right, to this four hundred ninety-two thousand dollars too. Um, you know, without having a major effect. He said we were gonna be able to handle it, right? Didn't see that. So again, that's another four ninety-two. Now, just, just an idea, now that we have some extra.
And, and I'll say it one more time and then I'm, I'm done. Um, I think it's, yeah, I think it's wonderful that we're adding new programs, but let's not take away from the programs that we have. And, and not programs, but is this class sizes that we worked so hard to get that number in the planner?
Anyone else have any comments?
So looks, so the idea is, I, I can put it this way. So the overall budget, the number that you're adopting today, would it change? Just the use of the resources would change. So the total amount of the budget, which is what you adopt, you don't really adopt like how much you're using from reserves and how much, really that's by board direction, right? Like we, we make a recommendation to you and then you say, yep, use that amount from reserves, take that tax money, you know, you can tax that amount, because you're gonna do, we do a tax report card, we file with the state. So really what it comes down to is, we can adopt the final budget amount and then we can explore shifts of use of reserves. Um, like you had said, we had recommended one point six something, I think, in the last budget. And the four hundred and ninety-two thousand that we just got, we removed from that reserve line to say, let's spend less of our savings account. And we were comfortable recommending to you that amount, knowing that probably two years in a row, you would use one point six and one point six, spending three point two million out of our savings in two years, to be cognizant of that. Because we're also doing a capital reserve project, which is gonna lower our reserves as well. So you will see a big decrease in our reserves over the next two years. Um, but we can adopt the final amount of the budget and then have a conversation of what it looks like to different scenarios of staffing and reserve use. Am I correct in saying that?
Right, right.
So if you want, we can come up with different scenarios regarding use of reserves to change class sizes and the amount of money we're using from reserves in different scenarios. We can look at the rollover list to see if kids went back, did they naturally grade a section? And do you wanna do that, if, you know, or were kids not being allowed to go back because of that? And come back to the board, um, with some information regarding that. And then you can make the decision on how much reserves you wanna use. If you wanna increase the use of reserves and hire additional staff, we can do that. But that would be a conscious decision, if you are taking consensus to use more reserves.
So with this budget, we are claiming that we're using less.
Yeah, the current budget, you're using four hundred ninety-two thousand less than we originally proposed to you.
So what I'm saying is we have to pass with the original one point three.
No, so the, the bottom line that you approved tonight is a hundred twenty-nine and seventy-seven forty-eight X Y Z, right? So that's never gonna change. The backend of it, you guys are able to change. You're voting on this amount of money and you're putting that out to the public. And nothing that we're collecting in taxes, because you're not changing the tax rate, changes for the community.
Because guys, we have to keep in mind too, you know, Glenn proposed a few, um, positions that are in the grant stuff that has to come into over the next couple of years too. We have to keep that in mind as we move forward, um, as well. Anybody else with any comments or discussion about that?
So we're more aligned, correct, with two thousand nineteen kindergarten enrollment than we were for the past two kindergarten first grade classes. So that's why we, um, so remember in Barbara's presentation, we have a, a staff member that I would say quote unquote is unassigned. But really Belmont was on the verge of breaking when we created the staffing. They were at forty-nine, fifty-one breaks Belmont, so we were already in line saying, hey, we're gonna need somebody for that kindergarten there. Um, the rest of the buildings are running with typical enrollment and there may even be a need, because if, if Woods runs typical for Parliament, so Parliament has run up to four sections of kindergarten. They're at three right now, because we have that rollover there. If they run at three, we're good. Um, and Woods has typically run at three, but they're running two because of pandemic enrollment. That could change to a third. So I think we can pay attention to all of these types of things as a moving target as we go along and kind of shape the shift our staffing based on what's coming in. Because around the thirteen sections are going to sixth grade plus one, the dual language section. So I say thirteen plus one. Right now, we have eleven plus one coming in. So that puts us overall at a minus two. So, um, and that would be, that's just eight of five. We remember we're adding to U P K.
That's minus two comparing the sixth grade sections leaving and kindergarten.
And the sixth grade sections I'm keeping at fourteen, so I'm keeping those sections at fourteen, which makes the class size there approximately twenty-three to twenty-four in sixth grade. So because if we drop a section there, that brings us to twenty-seven to twenty-eight, no change there. Right, no change in the sixth grade.
What about in special way in mandated classes?
Those were, other than the one that we've been speaking about in sixth grade, where we're keeping a really, you know, keen eye to, um, it looks like we're gonna be across the board, except remember Monica presented, there's a possibility, because annual reviews is still going on, of some plus ones. But we aren't really paying attention to the sixth grade co-teaching right now, that there may be a need for an additional section. So we're just.
It's co-teaching?
It would be one. We would have it at the regular class, it would just be the special education. Um, so we're keeping an eye on that, depending on handling the reviews.
Oh, good question.
Yeah.
What about the special classes? Self-committed special classes?
So the specialty classes in the elementary schools are staffed similarly and are able to push in their grade levels. And the report card can go in the middle school just as a regular part of the schedule. The only thing that we have been paying attention to is the U P K meeting. They have special areas, we're making sure that there's enough time in each of the special areas, so that a special area will happen in each class. So we haven't, I believe, we recommended some increases in family and consumer science, because we had reports at the high school, we needed more time in the middle school. And we asked for increases in art, they were point two in each. And point four in health, that would be, point five in health, correct, health leave? So we're increasing those three areas.
I was thinking about the board maybe have this, this decision to cap it, um, the number, but the experience of it. For my own kids, I think possible for, I would think twenty-four, you know, I would like to see it at a, rather than twenty-seven. I know my kids have seven kids in the kindergarten, I was just kind of thought the number was high. But I would like to see it capped going forward, closer to a twenty-four, that's a possibility.
The whole policy cap is higher than.
Yeah, so I think, I think twenty-seven, I think twenty-seven, twenty-eight, thirty, it's a lot for elementary, that's just fine.
Really? Well, middle, so you said sixth grade is twenty-three, twenty-four, so.
So that would be, the twenty-four, just glancing quickly, would be, I think, a increase of sixteen teachers. If you went to twenty-four.
Do you need twenty-four?
Yeah, same.
I think twenty-seven, but that's another conversation.
I, I'd say, I'd be happy with twenty-six, we could just go past.
So twenty-six, I'm idoling at a four F T E, twenty-four at a sixteen F. Oh, sixteen, I'm sorry, six for the twenty-six and sixteen for the twenty-four.
Right, so we, with that, there are sixteen sections running at twelve.
So really, we can pay attention to this and have this conversation. Again, we can come to you with scenarios and then you can guide us on what you wanna use in the reserves. If you want us to hire additional teachers, that's at the board's will and consensus of the board to do that based on use of reserves. Our idea was to try to really present something that didn't over expend our reserve use and also be cognizant of our grant that ends in two, in two and a half years and moving some of those positions that I know have been so for the social workers and, and of that nature. So we will do, uh, you know, some follow-up on this, but really the bottom line doesn't change as far as the number of the budget that we're presenting.
Let's keep in mind the tax pay also. Keep raising, raising, raising. We don't see, uh, these people, uh, I think they're gonna cap also, like, like that four hundred and two thousand, I think, they're gonna cap it, say. And the last week, we have the tax pay because of the details and the taxes, you know, that's just similar to their.
So that would, just so you know, that would have to change tonight.
No, I.
Just so you know, but I just wanted to make a difference. I just, you're absolutely right, we're gonna book that. And I'm sure no one can turn that into the tax rate. Um, but that would be, it would be done tight, because the tax is taxing for the heart. It's a real.
Anything else? Because now we need to go to the roll.
Wait, before you move on, can I ask you a question about it?
Well, we're gonna vote on the budget first.
But it took out the budget? Okay.
Well, we're gonna go first. We can, we're gonna have a discussion after this.
Okay.
Um, so we have the motion, we have the second, we need a roll call.
Mr. Petty?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Carvalho? Mr. Roland? Mr. Shai?
Yes.
Mr. Gavin Carvalho?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Okay, so, um, property tax report card resolved by the Board of Education, hereby adopted twenty-two, twenty-three, property tax report card, presented to the Board, uh, by administration, hereby authorizes the administration to submit the same to the State Education Department, according to applicable laws and commissioners' regulations. Uh, need a motion? Motion, Bob, second? Second, Teresa, uh, roll call vote?
Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Carvalho? Mr. Roland?
Yes.
Mr. Shai?
Yes.
Mr. Gavin Carvalho?
Yes.
And Mr. Davis?
Okay, so now we have reports from subcommittees of the board. Audit Committee? Uh, we have that. Building Inspection Committee? Policy, this was a quick turnaround, guys, so. Uh, Policy Committee meeting, we read those tonight, right? Nothing else is there?
Yeah, it's just similar to some of the policies, because a lot of the conversation we're having is in regards to discussing social media and the presence of communications. And we revisited some of those policies, like the D S R. So we get to have a conversation on both of these.
Thank you, Tisha. Um, Legislative Committee, uh, we're working with Colin on a few letters. He shared a letter with us, um, that the suits have sent up, and we're gonna work on an actual letter, um, to possibly piggyback that as well. Um, Communication Committee? All right, so board discussion topics, guys, uh, Board Docs, a little update on that. Do we have one, Dave?
Yes, sir. Um, actually, Veronica got an email today from the trainer. It's all the initial training information. She's going to solicit from them and from U D S, um, to begin the initial training. There'll be an administrative training and then there'll be a board training as well. So, um, that communication came, um, in between the workday and our meeting tonight. She'll review it tomorrow and then we'll get the process going, setting up a date.
Awesome, just a recap, Board Docs is going to be a, a website, um, a secure website that'll be able to work fluidly throughout the school district to help, um, you know, generate all the, you know, documents we need, um, for meetings and to, you know, just continue on doing business. All a secure place, um, where everyone can see actually as it's happening. Hopefully we'll mainstream on some of the processes for our staff members. We got a request, you guys, about the naming of the football field, did you guys have time to look at that? Okay, so we read it. So it's basically a gentleman that went to school here and lived here for a while is looking to rename the football field after someone else who went to school here and unfortunately passed away a little bit too young. So basically, my request is the board president, if that's okay with everyone else, would be just to go, you know, back to administration and if they could, you know, give us some information on policy of naming parts of the building or the field or anything, you know, on our property line and then as well as, you know, some history on some of the things we have done in the past. Does anyone else have any other requisitions or comments to talk about that?
Just on that, the football field, if you go back, it was named Heiser Field. Alright, that was dedicated to the first athletic director of the school.
Have any idea of the policy, do you hear that?
I don't know, I'll find out.
Alright, let me know because we need to check records on that, if that's the case.
And I know we're gonna do a hearing today, we need the little theater.
Yeah, so the last thing that the board had named is in two thousand and fourteen, this little theater. So I'm gonna go back, I'll read the policy, I'll advise you guys on the policy, I'll get the information regarding that naming. And then if I can get the information, then I can look into that as well because if it's already named, then we have a conflict there and we can look into that. And if there's any, so if there's any historians out there that have any, you know, there's plenty of people who have been here a long time, any documentation, anything else that you can, you know, come up with, please pass it on to, you know, administration or to Veronica.
I don't, I've read the file that he did succeed far from Zorbadon, but I don't, I didn't read anything about what people were back getting to write on it. Did we get anything on that?
This was the letter we received, that's all we got information wise, so I think it's important before we reach out to, to do Mr.
Conduit, right?
Yeah, Mr. Conduit, I think we should get all our information right, and then, you know, maybe again have a, I'm sure you might want to have these questions.
Alright, you might comment, well, I, I know we've had conversations and discussions about doing a wall of fame. I think that that might be something where the district can benefit from having a wall of fame. It doesn't have to be from athletics, it could be someone that was in athletics or in government or musician or athlete and so forth. I think that board members and so forth, it could be someone that put on to the wall of fame, but the contributions to the district. I think that might serve the purpose of honoring people that made, made the contributions to our district.
And that's occurring through the alumni association committee, that's going on now as part of our district goals. And we have a separate athletic one that's going on separate, but the idea that in any area of an accomplishment to be recognized yearly and having the wall and a plaque that recognizes individuals who have been tremendously successful following their education in Zorbadon is a great thing to do through that association.
Talk about that a lot.
Yeah.
Again, we have very history here, we have many, you know, many accomplishments.
Alright, one more time, we've got a board discussion, it's ex officio student member of the board, it's been a few conversations and dropped our plans up here. So we found a NISBA sample policy that Veronica provided to you guys. This conversation came from my meeting with the student equity team at the high school and they had an interest in being a part of the, an ex officio student member of the Board of Education. There's a lot of detail that goes behind being able to create that position, but the first thing is the board wanting to have that position on the board and reading that policy and making sure you fully understand it. So I just wanted to introduce it tonight so that maybe you could read that policy and then be prepared and we can have our attorney at the next meeting be ready to answer any questions you have regarding the policy or the process and if you would like me to explore it. From what I read, I believe it needs to be going to a community vote, which would mean next year. But I wanted to start the planning out because it's the student equity team now in the high school that had requested this and I wanna, you know, continue with the process to let them know that we addressed here that you guys were exploring that and continue the conversation with them through the year. The vote is to accept this or the students that want to be on would actually want as well? No, I think to create a spot on the Board of Education as the vote. It's a non-voting member, but you have to create it through a community vote from what I read.
Correct. Would be out for example this year on May seventeenth.
So it would be next phase, we could do it the next month, right? Great. Oh, yes, thank you Bob, I appreciate that. So just a couple of updates with the opening plan. One, we have an elementary principals meeting today and we are beginning to look at a transition back to cafeteria table use in our elementary schools. The principals are working on a plan that will be occurring after the April break. So that's one I want to bring to your attention. The second was that Kathy had sent a letter in regarding our surveillance testing, which is the testing that's required weekly for those vaccinated individuals and their request to allow home testing. And I wanted to make sure that you guys were all okay with the acceptance of home testing for that purpose. And if you are, then basically Barbara will set up a protocol and an attestation and work with the personnel department to. I couldn't see it, I'm sure you're behind that. So Barbara will work on setting that up so that people would have a place where they would upload their result, they would attest to that it was a true and authentic result and do that weekly for home tests. So just for purposes of all in favor?
Alright.
Alright, so now we have public participation in this section of the agenda against Board of Education opportunity to recognize residents in which to raise a question or to make a brief statement on matters including but not limited to agenda items. The time available will be limited to five minutes, any questions?
Okay, well, since it's facing that way, everyone hand down, so I didn't even have you. Okay, I love the music, I thought it was fabulous, I said for a long time entertain us while you guys aren't here, truly fabulous.
Listen.
Alright, I have so many questions. The UPK money, that money, if it's not used on UPK, we don't have the money, so we can't use it anywhere else, correct?
Correct.
I needed that clarification.
Correct.
It's per student, so if we're getting three hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars more, does that, we're only taking a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, I believe, out of the general fund. So the difference, we don't really have allocate for UPK, how do we get it?
So you, just like we did in our first year where we had the six hundred and ninety-nine, we didn't use the entire six hundred and ninety-nine. So what we would do is run the UPK program that was recommended, which was six sections. And then when the state tells us how much we're allowed to use per student, which last year was seven thousand forty-nine dollars, we will take that amount out for the section that was totally in the general fund and replace it with the UPK money. The board does have the ability, I believe in working the numbers with Ken today, that if a seventh section wanted to be created, it could be created with the grant money, where, if you remember the proposal, it's about twenty thousand annually in the general fund to start with each year, and it could be offset with the UPK money as well.
Okay, can that money also be used if you wanted to add a section of our process price?
So they get ten percent of our allocation, so whatever amount of students they.
Well, so their amount just went up also.
Correct, so she would decide what she would use that for, and she could add students to her current class or she could add in other classes.
We, we don't dictate the number of students they take based on the money that yet they tell us, so they don't have to spend the same amount of money.
But is it a guarantee we're getting that additional three thirty-seven?
Yes.
Okay, on the, on the vote, we're doing candidates for the board, the project, and what else?
The capital reserve projects, which were the fixing of the, the gas tanks and. Security vestibles, thank you.
Okay. What is the overflow policy? What is going on with kids who are in the overflow position right now?
The overflow policy is that if there are, if room for a child to go back to their home school in the subsequent year, they could go back. If the, if the classes are capped and there isn't room, that they will remain at the school they're at.
Okay, what you just said was could, they don't have to go back?
No, if there's room, they go back.
Okay.
But there are special circumstances that the board has addressed based on if it's a childhood special needs who was maybe declassified and their home school was a different school and they've been in a school for four years. If they're moving into the fourth or fifth grade, the board has allowed, so really the policy allows the discretion of administration and the Board of Education that we work collaboratively on, that we speak about when there's room and particular students.
Okay, at the last budget meeting, you were going to have the average amount per household?
One eighty-five. Well, that's.
Yeah, well, that's what the increase is, so that's, yeah, that's in the, so it would be one hundred and eighty-five dollars, yeah, just tax and cover. And then.
Based on an assessment of what?
Thirty-seven, I think.
Okay. Okay.
And if it's two fifteen, what I said last time in the meeting, if that's a tax rate per hundred, it's two fifteen.
Okay, and I know those numbers just came in, but coming to every meeting, I'm a visual person, it would have been great to have a copy of that just so as you were talking about it, we could follow along. At the last meeting, very quickly at the beginning, you hired a special investigator, what was that a reference to?
Personal matter.
Okay, didn't, didn't know, just wondering. Wait, what else did I have? What?
That's with the, on the average, it's just. Yeah, so the two fifteen, if that's a tax rate per hundred of assessed value, what that ends up meaning for the average household, so the average house that you use is about thirty-seven hundred assessed, could end up being an increase of one eighty-five dollars for the average.
Tradition number for apples to apples then would be the one eighty-five, Dan, we always speak about what is the grade for the average taxpayer. Yes.
Correct, yes, correct. And now, at the budget hearing, now we have that applied side as well.
I think we should keep the two fifteen as a conversation if it gets confusing. We'll keep the one eighty-five for average household tax, that's the number one eighty-five.
Twenty-five for the average, yes. If you, like, for example, the two fifteen is like, if you know your assessment in your own house is, say, five thousand, if you reuse that five thousand, is that your assessment? And then two fifteen, that's how you get what yours is.
And one quick question, is the, um, hands up that we have, that's on the website?
I, I don't know which.
That I just brought tonight.
Okay.
It was ready because we just created it today for you guys tonight, it will be on the website. It wasn't a formal presentation, it was because you guys were having a vote tonight and I wanted to give you the change and state it before you.
Next, a question, is it possible to click on the website that we're, we request the line by line when the budget scheme develops? If, if you're a public, to take a look at that as well, just to be transparent, or is that something that's not allowed to be placed on?
The, the line by line gets placed on now that the budget's approved, correct?
Yes.
So we're required to put it on once it's approved.
So I, you can put it on the floor, I typically, once it gets adopted, put it on here so that way somebody doesn't print it out and then we can change it, because if it's changed, but it's, so if they're printing it out, it's the final, that's why it's not posted beforehand. Recent cases draw close to which have every single line by line, but it doesn't include like the full line by line, so like once done. So that's the rationale for it. I mean, if you disagree, I can post it there whenever you want.
If it's done now, so we can revisit it next year?
Yeah, sure.
Class size has always been a big thing for me because I've had kids who were, who were in small size grade, like small classes and I've had kids who went through elementary school in twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty. Small sizes are so important in my opinion, but I understand it's all money and if we could figure out a way to keep class size, you know. And, and I know it's a dollar and cent game, because like Danny said, if it's a taxpayer, there's, you know, there's so many sides of it, but small class sizes are so important. I just had to sing that. It's what? Really? You don't argue? Okay.
Genie?
Hi, so I'm going to be back on Ms. Hendel and just wanted to say that the special ed population also needs to be taken into consideration with mainstreaming. Not only for the specials, right now we're not mainstreaming the students in with their same age peers because first of all, the class sizes are larger, so our students are going to specials by themselves. The only opportunity that they have to be with their same age peers is during lunchtime or recess. But then, when, right now we're in the middle of all of our annual reviews, when we talk about mainstreaming them for academics, if you have a class of twenty-seven, there really is no room to then put other students into those classes and then that bonus is on that regular teacher also for the special ed students. So that's something that I would like for the board to take into consideration as well when we talk about the class sizes. And then the next thing is, thank you so much for allowing the staff and to do the test at home. Are we going to be providing those tests from the district?
We have plenty that we can share.
We would love it.
So I'm gonna put them all in Kathy's truck. So he, he just means, so anyone who's in, what we'll do is we'll do another distribution to all of the unit leads again, like we've done before, so that each member in each unit can take the one, especially we have some that may be ending in May or so, we'll get those out first, but we do have a lot of tests that we could share.
So this week, you don't have to do the testing for next week, we're not here, so is this going to affect for the week that we come back?
No, the week after, because we need to be able to set up the protocols and get it out, so we'll need to do one more set of regular testing for the week we return, but then the second week, no.
Okay, thank you.
I have one more quick question. See, in following along, last, and tonight you were talking about class size, is that available on the website anywhere, like the curry?
Yeah, under policies, class size policy.
Not the policy, but the, the, the real numbers.
No.
Okay, because I kept meaning to get, to boil it, but I didn't think of it till today, because, you know.
Jennifer, this is Helen Mitchell, I'll first speak, I have a few questions. One, I think you can bring that up about the kids coming out of the special education classes, especially since you do have two classes in DeLuca that are at twenty-seven. So if you do have to put a child outside of special education class that isn't DeLuca, you wouldn't have to then move them. You know, I'm a little touchy when it comes to the overflow policy. You're not putting the child back, the child was never in that school to begin with. So I just want to clarify that, you're putting them into their home school that they should have been designated in, but they're not going back to a school, they're going to a whole new school. So I just want the board to keep that in mind because it is a, it's a transition from one school to another. It's not going back to a school that you were originating. Did, I know it's been discussed about elementary schools stutter starting, did we decide, did you guys decide you're definitely doing that yet?
We are definitely having a standard start, we haven't determined what the unit yet finalizes.
Okay, I believe that there was interviews today for social workers as well, and I know I had spoken with, with. If interviews were, I don't know exactly what happened if the interviews were, if there was people that are possibly going to be offered those positions. The next board meeting is, I believe, May tenth. Is the board thinking about possibly pre-authorizing the district to hire these people so that we don't have to wait until May tenth to start the process?
So I already have the authority to conditionally appoint people.
Okay.
So I haven't spoken to anybody about today's interviews, but if there were successful candidates and final interviews would be set up with me, then I have the authority through board policy to conditionally appoint them.
Perfect, that's wonderful. And the UPK, did, did, I know that they don't have to tell you how many, but I know that one of my friends had posted earlier whether or not they had chosen the kids to go to Christ, cross, cross, and pray. Have they picked yet or have they told you or?
They're just starting, they're putting out the information for their lottery or for enrollment and anybody that's on our waiting list will get an email directly from my office with that information so they can avail themselves of that opportunity.
Okay.
I don't know off the top of my head what date they're using for the lottery or the number of students that will be taken. that they'll be taking yet, if they're back to this meeting.
So, okay, so they should, you guys should know how to get in this?
You can input all cross of Christ, anybody can input all cross of Christ and speak to them directly, because their, their program truly is separate from ours, we oversee them, but they manage, and we try to, you know, distribute the information to help out the community, but anybody absolutely can call up and help you as much information as they can.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it, thank you.
How many kids are on the waiting list?
I don't, I'll tell you, well, I don't want to misspeak, I, I'm not sure exactly the number right now, because I do know that today we offered another spot to someone, so I don't want to misspeak.
Mrs. Lark, you had a question?
I just wanted to know if I can do a speech on this test that I have in the office.
Yeah, if you have tests in your office, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. That's the easiest question.
Kathy Shai, Laura Gannon, has any decision been made on central office? Decided or not?
We decided to put, since it's in phase, I'm gonna say six, to have the conversation when it comes up in the rounds. So we're in four and four A right now, and the building committee is going to be meeting about the next set of plans that we have for the libraries and family consumer signs, so it's just back in the queuing system to, that's, it'll be summer of 2023 is when that would happen, that work, so that conversation will happen during next school year.
Okay, so then we're not feeling as she is quite to vote about purchasing property or?
The board decided not to purchase property, so that decision was made. At this time, they decided to pass on the purchase of property, but making that decision, we then put the discussion regarding central office back in the proper phasing so that we weren't confusing conversations and going out of our order, because we're spending so much time in planning the next phase as well.
I can understand both, but just in the good opportunity, and I hope that building lasts a couple of years. So you better stay in the right group right here?
Yes. Ms. Cole?
Hi, this one is nothing on the security, and the bikes in high school, the medical security, and I did a meeting about Nathan, are there still bathroom alarms that you have during COVID that would happen to something that may help?
We're patching everybody. They're getting disciplined, that's, that's the issue, is that it's still going on even though we are patching the people, and with our new fire alarm, and then it's highly sensitive, because it's brand new, it's going off, we've had 11 alarms since September, and we are using smart pass so that we know where every kid is in the hallway and when, and we have bathroom monitors with people signing in and signing out at those areas, and we have been patching each of the kids and they've been receiving consequences. It's just not, probably much more is going on than the 11 that we thought. But we really are working with, we have the county again in the vape dot program and trying to bring in more education, again, that we did right before the pandemic, we were in a good spot, and we kind of slipped backwards.
And is it less like we have them very much?
So I really don't have any update regarding specifics, it's been much more calm since we've had those initial implementation of additional supervision and help in the buildings and putting some programs in and doing some outside programs, so things are, not like wood, seem to be going very well. I wouldn't say perfect, there has been a couple of incidences, but not to the magnitude that we were having before. Just gotta state your name.
Jasmine Willis. I just wanted to know as far as UPK, are you planning on adding next year a class?
So right now we're adding two classes for next year, so there'll be six total.
This is an addition from last year, or?
So right now we have four, and we're adding two more to make it six. But that's already been, the lottery's already done for that, and people have been given those positions and accepted those positions. Nothing after that has been added.
That's our one.
Okay. Any other questions?
Have a nice holiday.
Ms. Wolf.
Um, I don't know if this is, um, I shouldn't ask it now, but, um, my son informed me that and Relays is, um, he backed up track and field with the boys in the high school. They said that they wasn't going because of transportation, and somebody, I don't know if y'all like going, think about it?
I would have to look into that, because I'm not, we have one in the year that I'm aware of, so I haven't been told that there was any issues, concerns, or not going, so I'd have to look into that.
Because they, it's at the end of this month.
Yeah, it's only like two weeks, like-
It's only two weeks, yeah, the, the team is disappointed, honestly.
Very disappointed.
Every year, I don't know, I graduated from Longbow High School, and they're gone every year, so now this year, they're saying that because of transportation or whatever, they're not giving the funds or whatever. I'm not really sure exactly what's going on, I figured that y'all got to it though because it came from the coach.
Yeah, could you possibly reach out to, who do you? Mr. Freezyn. Mr. Freezyn first, and then obviously the administration will reach out to him and hopefully get an answer, maybe by that time he'll have an answer for you.
Because I believe you have to register, and Relays won't be two weeks away.
Yes. You know who Mr. Freezyn is?
The athletic director.
Yes.
Jasmine, did you, do you know that he registered the team for?
Who registered the team?
Yeah, because usually it's the qualifying time.
They, they made the qualifying time.
Okay, and there's an interim process, and are you saying that they entered and then they were denied, or maybe just never?
They were never entered, I went, actually, I actually went on the Relays website. The girls are registered, the boys are not. And, and the problem is that the girls have been, took a whole lot more meetings than the boys, so I don't know if it's, I'm really not sure, I just need some type of clarity exactly what is going on.
I think Mr. Freezyn could probably provide the best clarity for that. If you want, if you email me or call me first thing tomorrow morning, or I can take your information, I'm gonna do it publicly like this, but I can have to call you in the morning, and when we wrap up right now, I can just meet in the back and get your information, and have Mr. Freezyn give you a call in the morning.
I feel like the boys, they're getting the short end of the stick compared to the girls' track team. They went to that, you know, my, my son went to nationals, I had to pay at my pockets to go to nationals, a couple hundred dollars. I don't think that was fair.
Thank you, we'll definitely look into that, thank you for coming here and raising that concern.
I have a question, typically, teams go to nationals, but I know sometimes cheerleading term comes, do they typically have fundraising paid out of pocket or they sponsor?
So I can't really speak to many examples of that in terms of, other than the cheerleading team going to the nationals, where they get a lot of fundraising and be supplemented in the district. I'm not aware of any other sports other than the, like, maybe track that would have a national, so there really aren't other sports. There's Federation Cup is kind of the highest in New York State, like, for a basketball team, but there wouldn't be a national for basketball or team sport, so it would really just be for the individual sports of the states. So state, we pay for, and really that, the state is really like a county organization, so like, if you make the state section 11, share a bus, they go up together, there's a hotel, we cover our kids' expense, a shared expense. I'm not sure, so can Relays is a decision that is made between the coach and the athletic director, on is that one of the meets that the team is going to go to this particular year? Like, when they set up their year, they would discuss, we're going to pay Relays, we're going to this Relays, and we're doing this meeting. I don't know the history of can Relays, boys versus girls, if the boys are registered or not registered, the girls, I have to give that information. But there are several meets, if you notice, we even do them, Mr. Freezyn usually does it very early, almost like a year before, and you'll also see a lot of wrestling, like there's sort of wrestling tournaments that are upstate, or you have to register early and you get a bus for, and we approve those early, those, those tracks. So I would have to ask Mr. Freezyn, I'm not aware of any other example of the nationals.
As far, as far as these, are they, is the district against it, or I?
Yeah, no, there's no, there's no philosophy against that at all, that if it's something that our athletes, the coach and the athletic director believe it's in the best interest of the athletes, and it's something that's budgeted for, then it would be something that we absolutely would support and want our kids to participate in.
But I see something, districts, they're going to different means, are they against it, yes? I don't see a way for anything, and it's really disappointing that that has a side that has a lot of potential.
Right, I think it's a great conversation with Mr. Freezyn as a first step, because he could know best, and if there is a concern, he most certainly can address it with a skill in who he reports to and talk, we can look at our budget, we can look at what the kids are doing, can really get a history of what we've been doing or not doing, and get a handle on this. Thank you for bringing it to our attention, because I haven't heard this before, so give us an opportunity to look at it.
I, I just want to point out, the amount of planning tonight, for instance, the board had approved for the soccer team to participate in a tournament of its connected, the first September. So the board has been approving, and we've been presenting for various teams, so something here to me doesn't add up, so I just want to make sure you knew that the board has been approving, and we approved already something for September.
I would say that the board has not denied any athletic excursion, meet, or event that we have presented to the board at all. So we'll look into that, okay?
Thank you.
You are. All right, so no further questions, I would just hope to have a wonderful, blessed holiday, we're gonna be celebrating. We wish to go to executive session for Bob Second.